Testing one two three, testing one two three. Testing one two three, testing one two three. Okay.
Welcome, everyone. Oh, hold on. I've done it again. There we go. All right. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call tonight's public hearing meeting for ordinance 2024-43, modifying local income tax rates to order for this day, Monday, October 7, 2024, here in the Monroe County Council hearing in the Nat U-Hill Room at the Monroe County Courthouse. I want to note, for the record, here in person, we have Counselor Iverson, Counselor Wiltz, Counselor Crossley, Counselor McKim, and I'm Counselor Trent Deckard. Via teams, we have Counselor Marty Hawke. Counselor Munson is absent. Okay. With that noted, let's move on to item number two, adoption of agenda. Does any counselor wish to amend tonight's agenda? I have one I'll offer from the chair, but I want to go to you all first. Seeing none, counselors, I would ask unanimous consent that we add council discussion as item seven. It was left off as a slight Scrivener's error I did not catch. If there's any objection to that, please let me know. All right. No objections. So ordered, and the agenda is before us. We will do a roll call vote on adoption of this agenda.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, but she's muted.
You're muted.
TSD, if you can unmute or assist Counselor Hawke.
I'll come back. Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson, sorry, Munson is absent. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke, are you able to vote?
All right. We'll give it just a second. We'll just delay for a second here while we figure out what's going on. And TSD, you may look in your list. You probably know this better than I do, so don't throw a shoe down at me, but if you have the ability to unmute Counselor Hawke or promoter or whatever term you might wish to use.
Okay. Get me now?
We hear you, Counselor.
Okay. Now I can't hear you, but I, did you, if you called my name, I say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now I hear you. Okay.
Agenda is adopted. All right. Thank you very much. Next, we will go to item three, which is a first reading of ordinance 2024-43. I'd like to have our legal counsel, Ms. Turner King, read that as she has done in the past, and I want to thank her in advance for that large public process that she engages in. By the way, if she gives out at some point, let us know. We'll pass it along to somebody else to finish it.
Hello? Okay. This is ordinance 2024-43 entitled, "An Ordnance Modifying Local Income Tax Rates Monroe County." Whereas on July 30, 2007, the Monroe County Council pursuant to the authority of Indiana Code 6-3.5-6-33, now recodified under Indiana Code 6-3.6-7-16, adopted ordinance 2007-27, "An Ordnance for the Operation and Maintenance of Facilities Necessary to Provide Juvenile Services," originally referred to as the Juvenile Coet and hereafter referred to the Juvenile Service Lit Special Tax Rate, which established a tax rate of four hundredths percent of one percent to fund the operation and maintenance of the Binkley House facility. And whereas, since the adoption of the Juvenile Services Lit Special Tax Rate, the rate has been adjusted by the Monroe County Council on three separate occasions, with the most recent being on August 29 of 2003 by ordinance 2023-28, when the Juvenile Special Service Lit Special Tax Rate was decreased to eighty-five thousandths of one percent on the adjusted gross income of local taxpayers. And whereas, the Monroe County Council recognizes that the Monroe County judges have had a long history of working closely with families and juveniles to solve problems in a proactive manner, viewing juvenile detention as a last resort, and the Youth Shelter Bureau has established a track record of providing exemplary juvenile care, protection, guidance to juveniles when deemed necessary. And whereas, the Monroe County Council finds that decreasing the Juvenile Service Lit Special Tax Rate by fifty-five thousandths of one percent, making the newly authorized Juvenile Service Lit Special Tax Rate three hundredths of one percent on the adjusted gross income of local taxpayers, will continue to provide adequate and sufficient funding for the operation and maintenance of facilities necessary to provide juvenile services in Monroe County and allow for the continuation of the exemplary care historically provided. And whereas, on August 29, 2003, pursuant to Indiana Code 6-3.6-6-2.7, the Monroe County Council determined it necessary and appropriate in response to the ongoing increasing operations expenses of running the correctional center, hereafter the jail, to adopt a correctional tax in the amount of one hundredth of one percent on the adjusted gross income of local taxpayers in order to transparently reflect the cost of the operation of the county's correctional facility and to take pressure off of the limited county general revenue. And whereas, the Monroe County Council further recognizes that since 2009, the Monroe County has been priority to a private settlement agreement, which addresses the population pressures of the Monroe County Jail, and that a new correctional facility is necessary to remedy the identified concerns for the private settlement agreement and concerns documented in jail inspection reports dating back to 2009. And whereas, the Monroe County Council finds that the current correctional tax of one hundredth of one percent on the adjusted gross income of local taxpayers will not provide sufficient revenues for jail operations and for use as revenue for a bond to allow for the construction of a new jail facility. And whereas, the Monroe County Council determines it necessary and appropriate to adjust the correctional tax from the previously established amount of one hundredth of one percent to seventeen hundredths of one percent, or to a new rate of seventeen hundredths of one percent on the adjusted gross income of local taxpayers in order to meet Monroe County's fiscal needs of operating the jail and providing revenue for a new jail facility. Now therefore be it ordained by the Monroe County Council of Monroe County that a need now exists to modify the local income tax rates imposed in the following way. One, the Monroe County Council finds and determines that the need for juvenile services have been sufficiently funded within the county and that the already existing exemplary services can continue operating with a decrease in the juvenile services lit special tax. Additionally, the Monroe County Council finds and determines that there has been an increase in the operational needs for correctional facilities and rehabilitation facilities within Monroe County and the need for a new jail facility. To accommodate this, Monroe County Council will propose a decrease of the juvenile services lit special tax authorized by Indiana Code 6-3.6-7-16 from the current rate of eighteen, or eighty-five thousandths of one percent to a rate of three hundredths percent of one percent. Simultaneously, the Monroe County Council will propose an increase of the correctional tax rate authorized by Indiana Code 6-3.6-6-2.7 from the current rate of one hundredth of one percent to seventeen hundredths of a percent. The overall tax rate, including the proposed changes, will increase to a rate of 2.14 percent. For the avoidance of doubt, no change is intended or authorized by this ordinance to, one, the tax rate under Indiana Code 6-3.6-6-10 certified shares, which is currently nine thousand four hundred and eighty-two, ten thousandths percent; two, the public safety tax rate, currently twenty-five hundredths percent; three, the economic development tax rate, or EDED, which is currently sixty-nine hundredths of percent; or four, the property tax rate under Indiana Code 6-3.6-5, property tax relief rate, which is currently five hundred eighteen, ten, ten thousandths of one percent. property tax relief rate, which is currently five hundred eighteen ten-thousandths of a percent. As a result of the actions in this ordinance, the local income tax will be allocated as following, beginning on January 1 of 2025. And at this point in the ordinance, there is a chart which is currently being displayed on the monitors in Nat Hill. So I will, in reading below the chart, the Monroe County Council further finds the revenue generated by the correctional taxes necessary to pay for correctional facilities and rehabilitation facilities in the county. The local income tax rate proposed above will remain in effect until they expire pursuant to the Enabling Statute of the Indiana Code, or until the Monroe County Council chooses to modify them. Be it, and then be it further ordained, that a public hearing will be held on the proposed local income tax rate modifications on October 7, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. Proper notice of the public hearing was published pursuant to Indiana Code 5-3-1. Then thereafter, it will have a duly adopted, and then signatures by the council.
That is it. Thank you very much, Ms. Turner King, for reading that back and fulfilling our public obligation to that. We will now move to item four on the agenda. And Council, I open the public hearing portion of this meeting regarding ordinance 2024-4, pardon me, I believe I've got a typo here, 43, Modifying the Local Income Tax Rate. And I want to note that that is the ordinance that was just read by Ms. Turner King. Before we ask the public to step forward to offer their input, I want to just offer some guidelines for tonight's public hearing. This will be similar to previous, so no shock there. Those wishing to make public comment will be given a time limit of three minutes. We will alternate between those present here in the Nat U Hill Room and those wishing to make a comment virtually on Teams. Those present in the Nat U Hill Meeting Room will be asked to come up to this table here and sign in. Those attending virtually are asked to use the raise hand feature on your computer, and we will monitor that and get those comments. All participants are asked to state their legal name for the record prior to commenting. And following the last public comment, I will then officially close this public hearing, and then move to council discussions for that portion of the meeting. Are there any questions from council members on any of that? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If you wish to make public comment on this item, please come forward in the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on Teams, and we'll do it one at a time. All right. Come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Seth Mutchler. I'm a resident of Monroe County. I want to start, I meant to say this last time I was in here, and I have a overlapping commitment if this meeting runs long, so if I leave, it is of no disrespect. But yeah, I, you know, we've been talking about this topic for many years at this point now, but also at the last meeting, so I just want to say that all of my previous comments stand. I still hope that you will vote no for this raise in income, local income tax. But something, I sort of, I had a conversation with somebody that I sort of want to share that concept behind. I attended a meeting just the other day, it was sort of, not a meeting, a talk, about sort of the history of incarceration, and specifically the history of incarceration as it relates to mental health. And they were sort of tracking, they were interested in sort of, back to about 200 years ago, when we sort of went from this idea of, you know, putting people with mental health concerns in the dungeon, to bringing them into the enlightened age of mental health treatment, where we, you know, treat them as humans, with dignity, and sort of the era that we're sort of in today in a lot of ways. And in the post-talk conversation, that expanded to, well, the concept of our jail, and what's going to happen here, and how many of the things have been talked about, well, this will be a jail in which we'll provide mental health treatment and substance use treatment. And somebody in the room said, well, you know, if somebody's going to be in there, don't we want to help them? Isn't it better than just letting them languish, like in the dungeons, in the old, in the old way? You know, and it sort of got me thinking, and what I sort of said, and we talked after the event, and I sort of said, you know, I appreciate that concern for our fellow humans, our fellow community members. But I said, what I think I'm realizing in this phrase is, I feel like it's really stopping short of a solution, you know? Yes, the current model of putting people in a cell that is not shackles, you know, on the wall with all these sorts of devices, it's objectively better than the dungeons of 200 years ago, but I also think that we don't have to consider the current model of a jail as like the terminal state of how we help our community members who need help. And so I just sort of want, and we could of course talk about this for a long time, but I want to encourage each of you and ask each of you to, as you think about, especially now that we sort of have come together to realize there's a great amount of funding that is sort of available, or could become available, to help our community members, to continue to think about whether or not we're stopping short of the solution that we want, just in order to have a solution. And I think, you know, I worry that, I know we want to move forward, and maybe we want to take action, but my fear is that we want to sort of, you know, fix the problem, in air quotes. My fear is that 15 years from now, we'll say, ooh, we didn't really fix the problem like we thought we did, whereas we have this opportunity now, where I feel like we're at a turning point in our community, where we could really take some action that will make substantive change in our community and in the lives of our community members. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teams, and I don't see a hand yet on Teams. Go back to the room, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you, Counselor McKim. I appreciate that. I also would appreciate if you might help me out with the math on this 1,700% increase in the correctional LIT from .01 to .17.
Excuse me, I need you to state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Joe Davis. I am a county resident, 30 years, 30 years. And I'm opposed to the increase in the LIT at the present time, because I feel like we have time to pump the brakes on the building, or the siding of the new jail, figuring out the correct bed count, and also too, coming up with with possibilities to reduce recidivism by heading off at the pass a lot of the issues that are filling up our jails. For one, it has to do a lot with the probation violations, and that end up bringing some of our incarcerated people back into the jail. They, also, we have bonding issues that are keeping the jails overfilled, and certainly, we have a duty of care to improve the current situation. I had a ride along with Deputy Supervisor Moulden, Kyle Moulden, on Thursday, and we spent the first hour and a half of a two-hour appointment just walking around the interior of the space that the Sheriff's Department occupies. This is not the jail, it's just the Sheriff's Department. And the configuration of the rooms and the spaces makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. Nobody has done any kind of baseline study of where we're going to start from and try to improve things. DLZ has not done any studies. We really need our own local people to start looking into this and helping to figure out what the right process is. As I've mentioned before, the Federal Reserve just lowered the tax rate, the federal tax rate, by half a percent, and they said that they were going to lower that federal rate by two whole percentage points by the end of 2025. If we simply hold off in the issuing of a bond, and wait until later in 2025, we still have plenty of time to build the jail by 2029, as Sheriff Marte wishes, especially since we have already shovel-ready property right in the heart of downtown, which is available, and is of a higher use than what it is currently proposed to be used for. Thank you very much.
Go back to public comment. Public comment on Teams? I'm looking for any hand. I see none. Go back to public comment in the Nat U Hill, and I believe I've received the public comment from this room. Chair's not infallible, so if I am wrong on that, now is your time, members of the public who have not spoken, to come forward in the Nat U Hill Room. I'll return to Teams. If you have a comment for the, from the public, now is your time. Looking to Teams, I see none. I'll return to the Nat U Hill Room one last time. And I see none. Teams, one last time. Raise your hand if you have a comment. Seeing none. The public comment is now to conclusion. All right. There are no further public comments, and I read that there is not. Public hearing for ordinance 2024-43, Modifying Local Income Tax Rates, is now closed. We will move now to Item 7 on the agenda, which is Potential for Council Discussion, and we left that off the original agenda, but added it at the start of this meeting. And so I'll open this to comments from counselors that wish to make any at this time. All right. I'm seeing no comments yet, or Counselor McKim?
Yeah, I want to do, I wish I had had the calculations right in front of me, but I'll definitely have them by tomorrow. I think the question was raised on the percentage increase of income tax that this would represent. When I last did the calculations, I believe it came out to around 5% overall of the local income tax, because as we all know, the local income tax is actually made up of a whole bunch of different rates. The jail tax rate so far has barely even been used. We established it last year at pretty much the minimum. In fact, it probably is the absolute minimum we could have adopted, simply to relieve a little bit of pressure on the general fund. So it's not really a particularly relevant statistic, I think, to cite the increase in that particular component of the income tax. I think the overall increase in the income tax is probably what's more relevant to the taxpayer. And like I said, I'll have the exact number for tomorrow's meeting, but I seem to remember when I did it before, it's first approximation, it would be a 5% increase in the county portion of the income tax that a taxpayer pays. I don't know. Bree, do you happen to, you haven't done the math recently either? Okay, that's all right. Okay, so my 5.5% was essentially, thank you, thank you very much. That's what I remember having come up with.
Right. Thank you, Counselor McKim. Counselor Wiltz?
Yeah, I guess I just want to, first of all, acknowledge and thank the members of the public who made comment. They've been consistent and dedicated to the cause, and I appreciate that. It takes a lot of time. And I want you to also know that you are heard, and in particular, Mr. Mutchler's comment gives me a lot to think about, because it really, it hit with something I've been saying and mulling over for the past couple of weeks about this exact situation, which is, when we started out these conversations, I felt like we were ready to think outside the box, and as we've moved forward, we've just gotten closer and closer, and then jumped right back in that box. And yes, we are going to make things better. But I can't help but feel like there is just an inevitable sense of disappointment around the what could have been. And I hope that as council, and commissioners, and all of those involved, we don't think we're finished, and that we continue to push our community and ourselves toward possibilities rather than inevitabilities when it comes to...
Jack.
Thank you, Counselor Wiltz. Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I just wanted to comment, having to do with the special purpose tax. One of the things that I think is important for us to remember is that we did that, especially this year, because we saw that their balance was growing greater than what they needed, and that's not appropriate and not fair to our taxpayer. And so we know we can't leave it as low as we put it. We'll probably, over time, have to adjust it again. But that's a part of making sure that the tax rates that bring in, remember, a rate times a whole lot higher amount of income in the county will bring in perhaps more money than what you had said you needed in the budget. So that's something I think we need to keep an eye on.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke. Counselor Iverson?
Thank you, President Deckard. I wanted to make a couple of clarifying remarks of my own. Number one, I agree that whatever building we build using the revenue here will not be a dungeon, and I also agree it will not be a terminal facility. I think none of us is Pollyannaish up here to believe that we are going to solve everything that's wrong with our justice system today. I do want to say that in the ordinance that was, excuse me, the resolution, ordinance, excuse me, the ordinance that was read aloud, it does have room, excuse me, to, and I'll read here again what Ms. Molly Turner King had already read. The Monroe County Council further finds the revenue generated by correctional taxes necessary to pay for both correctional facilities and rehabilitation facilities in the county. I find this heartening, particularly as we are looking to the state for their work on rehabilitation facilities, and that certainly is something we're going to be paying attention to in this biennial budget year up at the state. We certainly know that we can control some things down here, but the resources may not be sufficient for us to control all things. And the last thing that I'll mention is that we are not going to be taking action on this item, simply because the sheriff or any other elected official wants us to do this. We are taking action because we are under a lawsuit that is mandating that we either take action, or folks will come in and take action for us. And I firmly believe that if you look at other communities around the state, that if we want to avoid building a dungeon, that we'd better do it ourselves, rather than wait for someone else to do it for us. Thank you.
Any other comments from counselors? Yeah, Counselor McKim?
Oh, wait, if anybody else has any. So this is something that Counselor... Counselor Wiltz has brought this up a couple of times, the concern that we just essentially pass this tax rate, do an appropriation, and there's a huge pot of money, and then we lose any say over the, over how it's used. I'm wondering, I mean, I think that's a legitimate concern. I'm just wondering if any of my colleagues have any thoughts about how we can make sure that we continually have a seat at the table as these discussions move forward, as to what is actually being built?
Counselor Crossley?
Is this thing going? Okay. So, yeah, I definitely have the same kind of concern and as the fiscal body. I think that that is, that's a part of our job and a part of our lane that we can stay in as well. But I would like to say, I think whenever those decisions are made and those discussions are happening, I think we... I think we, somebody here, should bring a chair to that table so that we can have those conversations, so that we're just not throwing money to a project and not having a say and thinking that our job is done, because it's not, it's just beginning. So we are very much, what we do, as I said many times before, can, we're setting ourselves up for either success or failure. And I don't think any of us want our names on something that fails. So I would recommend and strongly urge those that are listening, even those that are here, whatever table that you are at, to like scoot over and allow some of us or one of us to be a part of that conversation, because we definitely should be a part of that as well. I don't want us to be looked at as the redheaded stepchild of the county when it comes to this type of project.
Counselor Iverson.
Thank you, Mr. President. In answer to Mr. McKim's question, I think we should look at this as not a zero-sum opportunity, whether if we've missed the boat here, we're going to miss the boat into perpetuity. Rather, I would encourage those in the public to look at the report that DLZ had written. I think it's gone on two years now, where they lay out the different phases of what's going to happen here. And I think in each phase, we are going to have an opportunity to provide input as council members. And I think as council, we should encourage those involved to give updates to council, that we can have input and knowledge into what is happening. Today, I am encouraged that two such individuals that could potentially give an update are here in the room, and a third is watching. I think there's a lot of expertise and brain trust that's here. And I firmly believe that we're building the relationships that as we go through those stages, that we will have the input that we need.
Got Counselor Hock next.
Yes. One of my big concerns, and perhaps there's a list someplace and I've missed it, that's possible, but I haven't seen yet exactly which portions of county government will be moving to whatever site we end up with, and what other items do we plan to add onto that ground, whether there'll be separate buildings for whatever it is that is planned. And I think we need an idea of the total project. And maybe that will change over time, but surely we have some idea of what it is now if we plan to put money on the table and say, go forth. And I know that it's not just this tax that you're looking at, that it's also going to be a portion of the added tax. And maybe one might say we don't need to talk about that until we get ready, you know, spend the other tax. But I think there should be an overall plan, how we plan to move forward at this time, what buildings will be left vacant, what we plan to do with those buildings. Anybody have a plan for that? And, you know, do we plan to just implode the present Justice Building? If we plan to do that, that's several million dollars, additional dollars that we'll have to have for that, I would think. So there's a lot that we should know, I think, when people expect us to go to the public and ask for more money and they say, well, what do we get? And we go, well, you know, we'll let you know when we find out. So I continue to have questions. But like I said, maybe you all know what the answer is. I've not seen that. But if there is such a document, could you please send it to me?
Counselor Iverson.
You know, in addition to the phases that I just talked about, I'm reminded of the training that Councilmember Munson and I went to, the pony training, where the folks there were so emphasizing the fact that council has the role, not only to ensure there's funding for the project, but also that staffing levels are adequate. And the warning that if we build something that needs additional staffing, we're really going to have to be on it to make sure. So I think the role of the Personal Administration Committee is going to grow in this regard, as well as that whatever's kicked back here to council in terms of the way that staffing is going to need to be monitored.
Thank you. I skipped Counselor McKim and didn't mean to.
Oh, that's okay, I guess. And this is in response to some of Counselor Iverson's comments earlier in that indeed, we can, we certainly can and expect updates at formal council meetings. But I think a lot of the just kind of day-to-day work on this project is going to happen at the staff level, with the consultants, maybe in the commissioner's office, maybe not. I don't know. But I guess I would like, you know, I would like the council to have a seat at the table. It's probably just going to be one council, you know? We can't necessarily have a cast of thousands. If it's Kate, that's, or Jen, that's fantastic, or Peter, you know, anybody, that's fantastic. But I do think, I do think we should expect to have at least somebody from this body at the table when even the kind of lower-level discussions are happening.
Thanks. I just want to kind of build on that. It's not that we, it's not a self-importance thing, but it is very difficult to be presented with an up or down vote on things. And that's where we're headed with a lot of this. Here's the property, up or down. And my only sources of information to make that decision, I mean, I attended the public meeting this weekend. I've attended other public meetings. I've, we've had some other, you know, executive sessions. So I do have more information than perhaps someone just watching the meeting, you know, in the public. But it's just, it's not that I'm offended. It's not that I feel like, you know, my lane needs to go over here and swerve into yours kind of thing. I just feel like we can be so much better team players and support each other, trying to do the best project possible if there's a little bit more involvement. And the last time I brought this up in a meeting, the next day, we were all invited to go to a day-long, you know, facilitated interview of all the different departments. I do not want that. I do not need to be in the weeds. I do not need to be weighing in on whether or not four desks are ordered for the prosecutor and the equal number for the defendant, any of it. But knowing that those conversations are happening and knowing, just like Counselor Hock said, I mean, we know, we've, we're given information about a square footage increase, but we don't have any information about what goes into that square footage for the justice campus part of that. You know, I assume that there are folks who are working on that. And I'm not, I don't know that you have it all figured out yet either, but I just want to encourage staff and our consultants to, you know, include us a little bit in this, because we can give you, whoever is a representative of council can also bring the council perspective. The, oh, okay, you need that money for that. You know, we have to figure out where to get it. And do we feel comfortable with the tax rate that we are imposing covering that? Or could, you know, they're just conversations to be had. I will stop with that. I hope that, I hope that we can work toward that.
Other comments? Yes, Counselor Crossley.
I was just going to say to Counselor Hock's point, in terms of like, what's the list or what's all that? I don't think there is one, because I don't think, none of us have seen it. So it's not a gotcha moment where, you know, some of us are privy to a conversation and one council member or certain council members are not. So we definitely are not. But again, to drive it back to Counselor McKim's point, that's why we need to have one of us to be a part of that committee, because that person could serve as a liaison and would be able to report back to the full council during a session, more like how we, you know, erected JFAC and we reported back to the council, so that if council members had questions about certain things that are happening in JFAC and you can't watch the meetings and whatnot, you are now privy to those conversations, because at the end of the day, we all have constituents that we have to answer to. So I think that it would be important for us to have a liaison to these types of discussions. And that particular person could come back to the full council and report back on certain things that we would be able to know and to understand. And the other point that I will make, and then I'll stop talking after that, is, yes, we would like to be invited to things, but I know personally, it would be helpful if we can have a heads-up for those things as well. Just telling us, you know, on a Wednesday that this is happening and we have no idea, you know, those types of things are happening, it would be really nice. You know, I just find that we keep begging and pleading on certain things. And then we're just supposed to deal with it. And I'm kind of tired of just dealing with it. We are just as important, and our roles are just as important as the transition team, DLZ, and everybody else. And I just think it would be nice and respected enough if we can be a part of those conversations and included in those, and not just a thought after.
I'm going to jump in here. As chair, I know there's more eyes on this meeting than a Walmart sale right now. And so I'll throw this out to the other electeds that are watching this, or their staffs, or anyone responsible in the following offices. Sheriff, Commissioners, County Legal. Who am I missing here? Courts? I think that probably is the bulk there. So if you work in that office, pass this along to somebody else. Counsel, before they make a decision on this, want to make sure that we're at that table so that we can do the oversight. I was at a forum the other day, and somebody said that counsel, you're all about oversight. I'm not so sure about the word oversight when you're going after getting colas and getting things done, but if that pleases folks, I think being at that table is the word. So if you're watching this and representing those departments, go back to your folks and let us know by 4:30 PM tomorrow, if that sounds like a plan, and I think we'll be fine. I think that's a small thing to accommodate to get a big thing done. And I do appreciate counselors' comments about being in the loop, knowing things. I am very fallible about passing along messages that I sometimes pick up. Sometimes that's in the form of more gossip than firm. We've got to do a better job about being more firm with our news and information, and that is on my end as well. But I think that keeping people at that table so there's less surprise and more design is a solid thing. This is an easy thing to do. I think we can just sign off on that and we'll be good. Other discussions or questions?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Hock, yes.
Yes, at the meeting yesterday at the Will Detmer Park, having to do with the Vernal Site, what I thought one of the encouraging things that happened at that meeting is that the mayor sent her government relations person, he's new to the job, so perhaps we had questions of him he might not have been prepared for. But he did indicate that the mayor sent the message that she wants to work with the county. And I'm thinking, kudos. I mean, I almost had goosebumps hearing that, because it's time that we work together, because it is something that the city should have a keen interest in what it is we're doing. And if they want to put in a lot of suggestions that cost money, I hope they plan to put in the money that goes with it. But certainly, having to do the site location, I had inquired if the mayor and the city is willing to work with the county. I hope that that would indicate that they would be receptive to allowing us to go back to where we started out, how long ago, with everybody on the council agreed and signed off on all three of the county commissioners. And we did our homework, and we did the offer to purchase, and we were ready to go, and the city said no. And that was part of what was mentioned at the meeting yesterday at Will Detmer. But oh, the very important part of that was left out, that they said no. And that was well over, you know, back before we had a new mayor, before we had the new council. And it appears to me, there's not been any effort to go back to the mayor or to the present city council to say, how can we work together? We are, and to say it would take a year to get an answer on zoning. Well, every place we go, we've got to do a zoning change, so that makes no sense at all. So I'm hoping that we can work together. And I am just grateful that the mayor, it appears, wants to be at least a willing helping hand in this.
Thank you, Counselor Hock. All right. Well, counselors, I just want to note something. We will take this item up unless folks have another idea. But at least from the chair's view, I would like to take this up tomorrow night and dispense of the item that has been before us for a long time now. If there is no other comments on that or anything else, I will bring us to a closure. Counselor McKim.
So just to be clear, we could vote on this as soon as tomorrow, at tomorrow's meeting.
We could technically, Ms. Turner, can you tell us what we can and cannot do other than get a hazard?
You could vote on it tonight. If you vote on it tonight, it has to be unanimous. And anyone who is participating virtually would not be able to vote. Yep. Or you could vote on it any day after tonight, and it would not have to be unanimous at that point, but it would be a majority, because it would be a vote on not the same day that the ordinance is introduced.
Seeing that with a member remote and a member absent, at least for now, I think that we should not move forward this evening. Plus, there's the questions that we've asked and that 4:30 deadline I've offered to our colleagues.
I concur.
Clear that? I don't see anybody fighting me yet, so, all right. Counselors, I appreciate very much all your comments and all that. To the public, we appreciate your comments as well. We appreciate continued dialogue and know that that is an important part of this. Okay. So there being no further business before the body this evening, we will be in adjournment.